Welcome to Talking in Stations, it's Madderl. It is June 18th and today we're going to do something that we had postponed from Wednesday, which was an episode of what the leaders are saying. And what that means is we go and listen to their recordings, to their groups, and we try to dissect what they're talking about. In this case, we're going to do just one leader, and that is Gobbins. And this is going to be the town hall that was held last Sunday. So we'll listen to what he talks about. It's mostly not about the war that he's engaged in right now with Pandemic Horde. Mostly about CSM and CSM issues, but we thought, or I thought it was very interesting. So we'll, we'll look at it, we'll get an idea of how Gobbins thinks. And I think that alone is very interesting. So a little bit about him first. You've known him as the Pandemic Horde leader. He wasn't the original leader. That was Travis Kukiri, I think, who was a break off from Brave. But Gobbins is somebody who's been with Pandemic Legion a long time. Let's go look at his history. I don't know, there's some notable corporations that he is a part of here. I like looking at early history, like Northeastern SWAT. That is a good corporation at that time, 2009. So this may actually be his primary character, his first character. It may be his second or third character, and he's already experienced at the game. I should find out. But by the time 2009 rolls around, he's in Northeastern SWAT. That is a group that was notable at the time. I don't know, Muppets with Blasters, but it sounds like kind of a meme group. You'll see later on, he gets into, let's see here. Rupercussus is another group that was notable. We should find out where they're from. And then he gets into Northeastern SWAT again, and Snigardly. So this is all Pandemic Legion. And of course, he's a tournament player. He's an accomplished theory crafter and thinker. He's really one of Eve's, one of Eve's very rare, what would you call them? I don't want to say unicorn, because he can do many things. But he's, he's basically one of the thought leaders. That's the word I was looking for. A lot of people in Eve online history have different reputations for different things. I think you have to give thought leader to Gobbins as he's one of the preeminent thought leaders. He's somebody who thinks about the direction of many things and tries to map out strategies. Everything from nuts and bolts mechanics to overall diplomacy, to even game structure. Yeah, alright, so let's, let's hear from him. This, I think that was, this was Sunday. It's an hour and 20 minutes. We'll try not to listen to all of it. But, but I also just want to sit back and relax, have an enjoyable time listening with you guys. I don't have it mapped out like I want to. I just have a few notes. But the first part of this is going to be a lot of CSM. Then he's going to move into what they did at about 17 minute mark for CSM, and you know, why their input was important. And he also talks about priorities for CSM going forward. Now, he is a CSM member, and he's also very interested in it. And he'll explain a little history with Horde and the CSM and how that was a little, that gives you some insight onto what they think the CSM is for. And then at about the 50 minute mark, going to about a half hour of questions. For those that may not know, I just want to show you. Pandemic Horde lives in this red area here, Gemini Eight. And they also, of course, hang out, not in Great Wildlands, but actually a little further than that, over here. Into, I think Ethereum Reach is what I was looking for. It's over here, there it is, a little nearer to Gemini Eight. We'll put that, oops. So that's where a lot of their empire is. Of course, so that's where Horde lives. But of course, they are active in a war and basically occupying Delve at this moment. That is Delve. And everything seems to be right around here as this war enters the siege portion of the war. Okay, so sit back and I'll take you for a little tour with Gobbins. We'll hear his voice coming up now.
So let's get started. One thing important, I had some connection issues yesterday. So if I start to drop or my voice is cutting off, just spam CSM tunnel and I will see it. So I can, I can do, I can try to do something about it. Again, sorry, we had to move the tunnel from yesterday to today. Some internet issues. So the topics that we will discuss today, I think what the people are most interested in and what they've been asking is, first of all, why should we care about the CSM at all? What has the CSM achieved recently? And what have we done within the CSM that warrants us putting all these efforts to get our own candidates in every year? And then I will talk about briefly about what we'd like to see continuation of our work. This would be the third year that we have a candidate in the CSM. Third year for me, third, third term. And the terms are now capped at three, so this would be my last term. If I get elected, then I have to sit out at least one year. And we'll probably find somebody else to, to do the CSM for the year that I can't do it.
That's a new rule, that term limits three years, three consecutive years.
Just general topic of what the CSM has achieved. In order to answer this question, the most important thing is to look at what the state of the game was like before we started getting our own guys into the CSM, and how many things were changed since then. And so if you take a snapshot of Eve two years ago, you still had, number one, this, the meta completely dominated by these giant super cap umbrellas, where anybody that wanted to catch up or be part of the, like a serious player, had to rely on a massive umbrella. And then massive mining operations, basically, and raiding too, where in a small amount of space under the umbrella, you could generate basically an infinite amount of anomalies, whether it's for mining or for raiding, protected under perfect coverage of the umbrella. On top of that, citadels were also much harder to kill. That, if you remember, back then, there was no low power state. So you could spam these and not even fuel them, no abandon state.
Back then was about last year, the year before that, 2019 through 2020.
On a certain day of the week and not have to worry as much about defending your shit on the rest of the days of the week. There was a lot of really cancerous mechanic that people easily forget had to be fought and essentially got rid of from the game in order to allow the situation today. Now, it's important to point out that folks look at the situation today complaining about the effects of scarcity, the fact that scarcity has on, first of all, just a bon of making money or making less than before, sometimes for the same activity. But also on content, because when there's less people out there making ISK, it's also harder to find content. And these are excellent critiques of the state of scarcity. But to me, it's important whenever you frame such a critique that you remember that the reason we, CCP, had to implement such drastic measures with regards to the economy is that the situation was so, in such an unmanageable state, like runaway number of, just amount of minerals, money, and super caps put into the economy, that they had to do something very drastic. And we're dealing with it now. And I guess my bottom line is that most of the problems that caused this runaway economy began before we got into the CSM. And I'm not saying that we were the only ones who helped fix this, but at least we were part of the effort through the other, the other colleagues in the CSM and CCP to bring the game back to the state, to a state closer to sustainability and what it is today. So to me, in general, when talking about what CSM has achieved in the last two years, I would pinpoint as a very general topic, bringing the game back in terms of the economy and the meta back to a sustainable state as one of the most important accomplishments. And many small things, but one, another one I'd like to point out is the formation of Team Talos that happened at the beginning of the first term at CSM, my CSM two years ago. I think that was very important, because for a long time, people asked for a small team that would just take care of small changes, small balances. And now we almost take it for granted, but it didn't exist before. And previous iteration had been created by CCP of small teams that would just use small changes, and they lasted a very short time, because they would repurpose these themes, they would make messy stuff where they wouldn't be able to work on what they were supposed to work. And now I think Team Talos has been able to do constant little iterations for almost two years. The most recent-
Let's stop there for a second. One of the things he's talking about is the accomplishment of Team Talos, which was basically CCP Rise and other programmers, two other guys, Signal. He's developed, he's the actual programmer. And that team is put together basically to placate, I think, Nullsec and Lowsec, and basically guys that are interested in ships and PvP. And that was their little group that they sectioned off. That's part of a larger team that does the overall ecology balance, like how much is money worth in the game? And how fast do you gain money? How fast do you lose money? That sorts of stuff. All that is in considered a circle of balance and health of the game. And that's run by CCP Retati. So we talk about scarcity, that's the group you're talking about. And Team Talos is a subsection of that group that focuses on ship balance. This is something that players have wanted since 2011, where they thought that Incarna was a big waste of time, and they wanted the game to be balanced so that they could learn and relearn how to use ships and surprise each other. Because a lot of the doctrines were essentially solved PvP, where you figured out what the best ship to use was. And at that point, I'm going to, I'm going to say, you shouldn't say anybody out of CCP needs to be fired. And if, if, if that continues, you'll actually not be able to say anything else. These guys work hard at balancing a game of hundreds of thousands of people so that everybody's happy is impossible. And they make necessary changes that affect people's gameplay. But if you're unsatisfied with that, you're probably not, you know, you're not alive. And you're certainly not alone. A lot of people are unsatisfied a lot. I am one of the most unsatisfied Eve players in existence. And I'll explain that. It has a lot to do with this team that got created that is only about balance. And that's what they tried to do. So the advanced players get a team to fix the game for them over and over and over again as they continue to solve and solve and solve. And that is why that is constantly changing. It's never, ever in a, in a state where that ends, right? So there you go. We'll go on, but he thinks of that, this is Gobbins, thinks that was a great accomplishment to get a team dedicated to those changes. And that happened right after, pretty much right after blackout, which would have been 2019 in the fall.
Recent is now the blobs changes they're making. And that I'm also very proud of, some work that was certainly helped and pushed for by the CSM to have this team. Next, I will discuss what we more specifically have pushed for and accomplished in the CSM. But I wonder maybe, if you have some quick question, I'll see if there's some, like really important ones. Otherwise, we'll get all the questions in the end. But I'll give people like five seconds to put out questions for just this general part.
Okay, alright, he does a momentary pause for his guys.
So yeah, I don't see any questions about this. Okay. Oh, a quick thing, Ilian told me he may not be around. Vlad, will you be able to record and do the? We have accomplished.
A little programming note, I'll go ahead 30 seconds.
One of the things that this led to is CCP taking a more careful eye to what is going on in terms of not just the big wars, but also just, just a roaming fleet looking for content. Why can't it find fight? Why can't it find fight? And one of the things I had tried to explain to them is that sometimes one issue with Eve is that the stakes are poorly designed. In other words, let's say that you start to do a mining operation or whatever it is, then you are able to pull all your ships away from the mining operation really easily. It's difficult for a hunter to use that as a way to escalate into a fight. Because by the time he finds you and gets there, there might be nobody to tackle. And on the other end, let's say that somebody is attacking your citadels. This was another example. And they're kind of troll reffing your citadels, and you want to defend them. You do want to fight, but the attacker is able to immediately pull off from the citadel. And essentially, there's no stake for initiating some of these activities. And so we looked at it, and obviously siege mechanics were one of the most simple ways for if to have reliable stakes. So for example, you're trying to siege a pos in the old, you know, the old poses, you would siege a dread. And then your dread is stuck there, you can't just pull it off from the pos. You're stuck there for a certain amount of time, which means that somebody with bright timing can jump on your dreads, and then you have to either give up your stakes, or these dreads that you originally put on the field or do your own escalation. And that was one of the sort of escalation path that worked the best in Eve. And not everything is to be based on a stake or something where you're tackled for a certain amount of time if you're trying to make money or if you're trying to attack something. But we looked at several elements in Eve, and at least what could also be done, we saw was that maybe it could be possible for other things to become the stake than just the ship itself. That was one of the concepts behind the SS. Essentially, that somebody could go, and even if they miss your Ishtar or your raiding ship, they could try to steal some of the money that you were making. And then you have the choice, do you want to go fight them to try and save that money? Or at least if they don't get a fight and you don't go to, to contest them, and you just let them roam around in your space, they could essentially enrich themselves by, as a, consider it sort of a consolation prize, harvest as many ESSs as they found, if you've never contested a roaming gang, for example. And so that was definitely one of the elements that was brought up by us. And then not in, we didn't, the way it works with CCP, you don't pitch like a finalized idea. You talk about things. And then, for example, in the case of the ESS, the part about how the whole reserve bank part, the part of how it's inside, beyond an acceleration gate in a dead space pocket and the rules of that dead space pocket, and all stuff like that, that was all sort of, you know, designed by CCP.
Well, there's something I want to stop. And he's talking about how CCP works with the CSM, and it's very interesting if you look at it. He's saying that you don't actually get to say, this is the problem. Here is the solution. Here are the four things that need to be changed in order to make that work better. That's not how they operate. Obviously, they don't want new players to just figure out how to take, you know, take advantage of things. But I think what he's saying is, you get, you get to prioritize something, saying this is a problem, much like Exzuki did a few years ago for Wormholeers, saying, here's the problems that Wormholeers have. Not that Wormholeers have, but with the ecology of Wormhole. He actually gave up some secrets that, that people wanted to keep quiet. And that got him into, him into a lot of trouble with other Wormholeers. But he was basically saying, here's where the broken parts are, the parts that are good for us and the parts that are bad for us. And then CCP figures out, well, how do we fix that? And we'll fix it in these five or six ways. That is how the CCP can say, we can have these player representatives that obviously are conflicted, right? I mean, you have leaders of Nullsec, seven or eight of them, inside this focus group on how to fix the game. That's a conflict of interest. But because it's democratic and these guys know to law, you know, to leverage their guys for them, they can get in there and there's just nothing anybody can do about that unless you change the system. That said, how do you protect gameplay from those people? Are they just so honorable that they won't actually act on any information they may know? It's impossible to think that somebody is going to put themselves in a worse position if they know that buying, for instance, buying a ton of low end ore in September is not a great idea, because it's not going to be as valuable in February. Why would they ever make that investment in September if they knew it wasn't going to be valuable in February? They won't. They're not cheating, but they're not going to put themselves in a bad position by making a bad investment. So they know certain things. I'm not saying they're dishonorable, but there's just no way to unknow the path of the game. So if they're asking for things, saying, here's an area that we want to fix, or if CCP is saying, we're looking at faction war. We know that you guys are good at faction war. Why don't you tell us what's wrong with it? There is some kind of consensus on where the problems are. But CCP is going to figure out the details. Again, what he's saying is CCP figures out the details. What I'm thinking is, but Gobbins knows where the problems are and what the things are that they're going to fix.
Interactions with the CSM, but just to give an idea of these things work. What we're, I'm quite proud of the fact that this concept managed to go from an idea and a pitch to CCP to something that's implemented. And that I think has a positive effect on smaller roaming. And in general, besides just small gang and people in smaller alliances roaming, even when somebody from a big alliance decides to take out a smaller fleet in somebody's space, the fact that there is this option to try and generate fight by poking the SS. The other thing that I wanted to highlight, that was sort of within the same sphere, was I mentioned now the example of the citadels, right? And so when I was explaining this to CCP, I was also showing how when you're attacking a citadel, so now it's from the perspective of the attacker. If the defender is relatively rich, so most alliance, block alliances, they can, it can be convenient to just let a ton of citadels die and then replace them by spending ISK, rather than constantly responding to troll refs or small confrontations, especially if you have citadel spread everywhere. That was a good example of this, where, for example, logistics citadels used to jump, jump freighters all over the map. And so one of the problems that we had identified, that, so this can be solved from so many angles, but one of the problems we identified is that, one of the things that really sucked for the attacker, attacker is that even if you win and contested, the loot you get from a citadel is so little that you still feel like you wasted everybody's time. And so one of the ideas pitched as a simplest, like really low hanging fruit solution was, add some, something expensive that needs to be inside the citadel, and that always drops us loot, so somebody can attack it and get it. And at the same time, add like a siege stake, where if you're attacking a citadel, have the attacker have to put down something like a SBU or whatever that allows them to attack the citadel. So if they're just doing troll refs, and then they don't show up, when the defenders do show up, the defenders can claim this little token or whatever. As a, just a basic stake idea. And as you can see, they went with half of this idea. They did implement the cores. I think they didn't go far enough. I was hoping they'd make them more expensive and maybe some interactions with asset safety, where maybe there would be a more expensive core that protected asset safety, and then a basic core where you don't have asset safety. Anyways, there's many ideas around that. They did not implement the siege part of this. I keep asking them sometimes, you know, when, when is this coming? And for example, the siege part of this, they feel is not a priority, but still a cool idea. Yeah, so ESS and cores, two of the things that they want to sort of spotlight as an example of a sort of a larger project and change that we pitched to CCP and over the course of the two years, they implemented. Other stuff that I want to just quickly highlight from my list, where the formations idea, that came from a bunch of discussions around how, on one end, bombers should become maybe stronger when it comes to dealing with expensive fleets or fleets that move very fast. Bombers have struggled to really do anything about those fleets, like a bunch of munions. But on the other end, bombers and AOE are, where especially, extremely strong against tech one fleets and more newbie oriented fleets, whether it's a bunch of DSSs, where it's a bunch of battle cruisers. Because every time you ping on grid, the fleet has tubes, coalesce back into one little ball, and then starburst again. And we were thinking of many solutions. And in the end, I thought it's pretty cool that they released the formations, which are not just a little bit of a solution in this direction, but also maybe can be iterated on to create more skillful gameplay for FCs that, when I use formation to do advanced stuff. Let's see, I see some questions popping up. Okay, no, nothing related yet. And yeah, other small things that I brought down that I wanted to highlight that were very specific to problems that I think everybody faces, but especially PH. We had spam of corp mails in PH Inc., because the game was set up in a way where there was no rules to prevent any random member from spamming corp mails. And this was due to the fact that they wanted to allow characters that were being sold, to notify their corporation, because it was in the rules. If you sell a character, you have to notify your corp that the character is being transferred. And that was kind of a primitive way to deal-
Yeah, that's totally primitive.
...then fixed it so that character transfer show in your character history, and that you no longer need to mail your corp. And so they could add a role for this. And we got rid of this super cancerous mail spam that was in PH Inc. Another thing related to that was you couldn't kick Aoxers if they were just sitting cloaked in space. That was another sort of glitch of how you can, kicking people from corp works. And they fixed that so that you could now kick people that are cloaked, if they have no roles, etc. And this is just as an example of why it's important to have our own representative that can push for problems that also interest directly.
This is interesting.
There is change that can be done through the CSM. These are some of the examples. And by the way, before we had our first representative in the CSM, I think for three years, we voted for other people, just helping other people. We weren't interested in the CSM. So we helped other people with our votes. And none of them managed to get even this most basic thing like the corp mail done. I think in hindsight, when, when you just rely on other people, they, they just don't have like the sort of priority or the proper sort of drive to, to make even some of these small changes done, which mostly requires staying on the problem and finding the right person at CCP that could do this, and very politely and patiently bringing up the problem, showing why it's an actual issue, not some quirk that you came up with. And then seeing what they can do and reminding them every now and then. And eventually, it gets done. And in that case, I want to shout out to Barra from CCP, who has done a lot of these small changes that we have highlighted and encouraged them to do. The most recent one-
Well, there you go. It's obvious influence to fix things in the game that you want to fix.
If you have in fleet, instead of having to copy paste your fleet thing into an external tool, the fleet window tells you the summary of how many ships you have in fleet. A small thing, but I think the small quality of life for FCs, that mean the FC doesn't have to copy and paste and use external tools. All these small things add up and are really nice things that we-
Now, the reason I stop here is because I just want to reemphasize that point, that they had supported other people's CSM. In other words, not finding incredible value in it, thinking that they would get representation out of their colleagues. And that wasn't the case, he says, and they needed their own guy who would bring their own issues up and stay on top of them, instead of relying on somebody from a different alliance to stay on top of your issue. And this is funny, because Gobbins sees it as important to get their guy in from their alliance. So does Noros. Obviously, so does Matani. These guys think it can't just be somebody on our side. It can't just be a Nullsec guy. It can't even be an initiative guy or a bastion guy. It's got to be our guy. It's going to be from our alliance, somebody we have direct influence over.
We have done for, for the game. Let me see the rest of my list, where we can move to the last topic. Oh yeah, I had here, so-
So here he goes through some of the stuff that he's proud of that the CSM did. We may jump ahead a little here to save some time, but we'll see.
Just in the most recent quadrant, so the last, the first four months of this year, or where were they considered the quadrant? Sorry, three months. We recently had on the CSM like a retrospective or a summary. And so I was able to list some of the changes. And I thought it's important to maybe mention them quickly, because it's easy to quickly forget how many things are getting changed and improved and can go under the radar. And so just to highlight a few, just in the three months of Q1, there was the formations. The removal of burst nullification, that's something that, by the way, we pushed for. We weren't the only one on the CSM to push for it. But remember how cancerous it was when you tried to entosis and somebody fleet warped a bunch of scepters and bursted you? We got rid of that. The Eden Comreworks, the mobile Sino. The, so the anchorable Sino thing, which helps the logistics. The changes to Bastion, which I think are very interesting to discuss as well. I don't know if we have time today, but One Direction, which CCP has started to bring money back into the game with high risk, high reward PV, so start to move away from scarcity. The expert systems, this were the thing, I think, went under the radar for many, where you can buy to have access to a few skills as a newbie quickly to try things. And then they come in these packs. The fact that you can put multiple jump clones in citadels. The change to the target spectrum breaker, the one where it used to jam people that were targeting your battleship, and now it's decided to make your sig small.
Alright, he's going over some, we'll go ahead a couple.
Forward sense of stuff is in the pipeline. Conflict drivers just mean things that motivate players to fight each other.
He's talking about what CSM does to build conflict drivers.
Prevent two groups of players that want to fight each other. but somehow can't because either the mechanics are messed up, there's problems with times and tanking and the mechanic works, or there's problem with, let's say, just finding the other fleets to fight. They may not be out at the same time because there's no clear objectives for them to fight over. Problems with the granularity of objectives. In other words, yes, if you want to go on a big war, you're gonna, they're gonna have to fight eventually. But what if you have a smaller gang and you want to start some trouble and make it giving meaning for the defenders to come fight you rather than just ignore that type of stuff. I think we pressed these ideas with CCP for two years and they've started to really see some of the value on working on these conflict drivers. As I mentioned, some things they already implemented, especially simpler things and low hanging fruits. I think this is a good time to also mention that this and the, this doesn't just apply to null sec, but I think low sec has a big role to play too. This is sort of a tangent, but together with, sorry, together with Phantomite and Torvald this year, we had done a series of presentations to CCP to re-explain to them why helping develop low sec isn't just like a gimmick where, oh yeah, there's some people that like low second are special and so throw them a bone, but is a vital part of the ecosystem to prevent the super clustering of players within null sec blocks. Because if you, this is kind of a long tangent, but essentially if you give enough health within low sec for a place where essentially the player infrastructure isn't as important and player defenses can't be maximized the way you do in null sec, that allows smaller groups and people with less infrastructure and numbers to start creating some content for themselves, some, some things to do every day. If they have resources to harvest, if they have, then they have those resources to harvest, somebody else may try to contest those resources, they may fight over those resources and create a parallel ecosystem, if you will, that can compete and prevent just the null sec mega blocks from, from getting everybody. And on that note, I just thought I'd mention it because a lot of the stuff we proposed, it needed too much work, so it's not ongoing yet. I hope, I really hope that in the next year, you'll see some of the fruit of the work, especially of like Phantomite and, and Torvald, because you couldn't quite see it this year. But at least a start is that when they redistributed the resources, they made it so very key resource, so tech one ore that you need for every tech one ship, every capital and partly every tech two ship is only in low sec. And I think that's a great start in the right direction. The way they implemented it maybe is not the most optimized towards small groups, that more work can be done about that. But so on the subject of future plans and what they've done so far, as far as conflict drivers, I think this is a great step forward. We have also pushed and continue to push for the return of something equivalent to the old R64 moons, especially in low sec, as they were giving a great reason for people to come to low sec and fight. And also a way for low sec alliances to have some kind of top down income, whereas you know, null sec alliances can rely on large, either taxing or renters and stuff like that. That gives the low sec guys or low sec options to have their own. So anyways, so this works both as sustaining the ecosystem, an alternative ecosystem in low sec and also as a conflict driver, you can go and have people fight. So anyways, one of our main goal, the main goal, I would say, continuing the push for conflict drivers. The second, as I mentioned, is we're interested in making the game better for FCs. FCs are the people that generate the most content, that allow other people to also enjoy the game.
This is important, if you want to know how null sec, and actually PvP'ers in general, sea fleet commanders, this is good insight into that. He's going to give an explanation on why they're so important and see if you agree or disagree. By the way, Sword Dragon used to have a discord when he was a chief diplomat, before he lost influence and left the game. He basically said that his discord had just one title for people. And if you weren't that title, you weren't really in that discord. I think I was the only guest as media, I was the only guy that didn't have a title. Everybody else that was in there was called content creator. And everybody else that was in there under that title was an FC. Therefore, the way that these null sec guys and PvP'ers see fleet commanders is the content creators. And he'll explain that.
They're not the only important or the most necessarily the only important players in the game, but they have such an important role to play, especially when it comes to the ecosystem of content generation. Let's put it this way. I think it's, it'd be great if CCP can just make their, their life as easy as possible when it comes to quality of life. From the perspective of the UI, from the perspective of some things on how to handle fleets, how to find fights, anything that helps that is a big step forward. Some, some examples of the, the work we've done in this direction, without repeating myself, some of the UI changes, some of the formation changes. And I hope so as my number two priority, help can come from CCP in making FC's life better. And the third thing, which is kind of a generic thing, but we are a newbie corp and constantly interested in making the game easier and more accessible for newbies. This is the easiest because it's already a big priority at CCP. So regardless of what we do, they have a large number of people working on constantly improving the new player experience. They've also improved the system with which players can find initial information. They've set up this thing called the Academy, just started just a few weeks ago. It's very nice. It also has recommendations for newbie corps, including pandemic cords. So that's really nice. Generally speaking, things like the, what's this called? The expert systems that I just mentioned. So things where newer players don't have to buy injectors to try new things or wait for many month, but can maybe pay a little bit of ISK and, or money, I don't know how it works now, but just have something unlocked for like a week or two and they can try it, whether it's exploration, whether it's mining. Thing that helps the retention and yeah, so the number three priority is new player oriented changes. Okay, yeah, that's 30 minutes in, about 30 minutes in. That's what I want to talk about. And I can start answering the questions now.
Ah, so fall into Q and A here.
Take it from the beginning here. Okay, Toca asks, what are the views of the CSM regarding sub mechanics?
No, it's not.
And will there be significant changes in future? I think that there is always an interest in improving the sub mechanics. I don't think there is as much of a, I would call it panic or sort of an aggressive attitude towards sub mechanics being broken as much as there was at the beginning, way back when AG Sub just came out and entosis was just totally ridiculous or when the citadel had all kinds of problems. I do think that there is a lot of room for improvements, especially when it comes to one citadel's and their interaction with time zones. So I still think that this will only get solved if you manage to make it so citadels can be got both the armor and the final timer fall within a weekend, whether you make it very short time between armor and hull or whether you make it seven days between armor and hull.
That was a big deal to them at the time because they wanted to have the weekend warriors. Now, if you think about it, null sec guy's been around a long time. They usually grow up out of college, have jobs, have families, get on with different periods of their life. They're not available to do alarm clocks at, you know, three in the morning or whatever. They're certainly not available to hang around in a fleet to defend Rorcal's all the time. So they are kind of weekend warriors where they can set aside some time. And this was bad for them, this change, because to kill a structure, you would have to reinforce it on a Friday in order to kill it on a Sunday because it takes three days. They really wanted two days so you could reinforce it on a Saturday and kill it the next day on a Sunday, but they didn't get that. Wormholeers did, but not null sec.
And apart from that, as far as ages of the ages of part of soft goes, I think that again, there, there can be improvements, especially something that just was floated about was that you could set up deciding your IABs, excuse me, whether you wanted to, so that essentially the defender could sort of control whether they would prefer to have many nodes, but that spawn, was it like many nodes spawning in a, but they spawn more at once or have less node spawn, but all clustered in similar systems? And maybe even the possibility of some weather effects having a chance to be triggered based on what you put in the IAB. These are all just ideas and I'm mentioning them because they're so far from finding, I think, interest or being implemented, but just trying to share with you with some of the ideas that were floated around ages of. I don't think that there was any big sort of priority or emergency put into both from the side of CCP or from the CSM. I still feel that to complete the core, it would be great to have some kind of siege stake added to solve. You don't really need that for AG soft because the entosis ship, I guess, is your stake that you're putting there. It can't warp anywhere, it can get bapped if you get bridged.
Stake is what you're risking.
For refing citadels especially, I think that would be great if you had to put down some kind of SBU, yeah, as, but I went over this before. Let me see other questions.
We are in Q and A period, by the way.
Question about munin, instead of major fleet battles, there are chances of being rebalanced. So we CCP tried to rebalance the munin many times. I, I've lost count of how many small nerves they, they did to the munions over the last couple of years. I feel that every three, four months, they try to touch the munin and eagle a little bit. My suggestion when it came to those touches was to try and influencing range most of all. Because you can have essentially, I think the reason that the munin is so broken is that in the same package, you have something that can fire from far enough. So the, the range isn't the highest range, but it's very good. It has high alpha and it has the speed plus the tank with the ADC. The tank is kind of, you could, you could argue again, whether it's true that the munin is too good of a tank or not, but at least for sure, the munin is incredibly fast. It has really good alpha and it has good range and.
I'll stop him right there because I want to reemphasize for the last year and a half or so, munions have been a big ship to be used because of all the reasons that he just listed. It's fast, it packs a punch. And in this day and age, an Ivan line dictating range is actually really important. The other thing that's very important about munions, these are heavy, they're hacks, they're heavy. Heavy, they're heavy assault cruisers. I don't know why I couldn't get past heavy, didn't seem to go with assault. They're assault cruisers, basically. They're, they're, they're tougher than normal cruisers. They have T2 tanks, basically. So these guys can go fast, they can hit hard and they can maneuver and escape. And that's the big part of it, that munions can actually get away. That's a big part of the meta now, it has been for a long time because normally if you come under attack from a sizable munin fleet, you're going to drop caps in order to scare them away and munions can get away from caps rather easily. But he talks more about that and let's listen to his take on it. And he is a fantastic pilot, so Gobbins is not just a CEO leader, but he is, he is way in there on how things work.
That's just too much of a combination to me. Even if you just slashed the range, but like severely affected it, you would bring the munin into balance because yes, it can move fast. Take the vagabond, the vagabond can also move very fast as, as the ADC and maybe not as good alpha. But the problem is that without the range, then there's so much counterplay to your speed. What's really messed up is when you have a lot of range and a lot of speed. It's kind of sometimes the problem for the Serb as well, but at least the Serb has other drawbacks. So when you ask if the munin is going to be touched again, I'm pretty sure they will. It's just that they tried in many, many ways and it seems that it's never quite enough of a, of a nerf and they don't want to just completely break it. They also, by the way, they thought that when the formations were introduced, that might have been an indirect nerf to the hack meta. Because if it makes the battle cruisers more viable, just massive fleets of ferroxes, for example, handle munions very well. And so they thought, okay, let's give it some time, let's see if just bringing the formations takes ferroxes and battle cruisers back into the main meta. And then that is it by itself a counter to munions. Looking back, that was kind of interfered with by the, the industry changes where the prices spiked for a while. Battle cruiser were too expensive anyways, so I think we couldn't really see if that happened or not. Now the prices are back to a decent place, battle cruisers are pretty cheap to replace. I think they're four times, you can replace like four fitted ferroxes insured for the price of a munin. So who knows, maybe, maybe the meta will change again. Eris asked, we saw changes being run through with very short amount to test drive. So that's they.
Big complaint recently?
They had announced those changes, most of them were either part of a longer discussion with the CSM or at least the weeks before, like the blobs changed, they were at least in talks with the CSM for two weeks before they brought it to CC. And my impression is that part of it is they kind of like to make up their mind first because they know is once they start asking the players, unfortunately, they always get so much feedback in both directions and then unfortunately, some of it is also quite toxic. So not super constructive. So I feel what they've started doing is they, they talk to, they, they come up with something they want to change. They make their, their plans internally, they talk to each other. When they have something that they think is interesting, they ask CCP for feedback to see any glaring problems. For example, the blobs change, I think it's fine to disclose that at the beginning, they were thinking of totally removing the bridge. So you could no longer blobs bridge at all unless you jump the blobs with your bombers. And then of course we told them, look, this is a very big nerf to people that are casually trying to drop 1050 bombers because now suddenly you want to kill even just an ishtar and you have to risk a two billion ISK blobs every time you jump in. So, and so, okay, so they looked at that and then they changed to what it is now, where you have both the bridge staying and you can also fleet jump. At least that's what's on CC right now. I don't know how they're doing future passes and iterations. That's just to give you an example. And then they, when they finally put it on CC, it's when they sort of won the last feedback from the players. And then it means that they're ready to release it soonish. What you also point out, I think, when you say about the short delay is they don't really give enough people warning, they don't give people enough warning before putting stuff on actual TQ from CC. Like some people complained that when nullification was brought in, it came out of nowhere. People had to refit their, their scouts, that their everything that you remove their workers tabs and they didn't know when. And so we brought that up with, with CCP, actually, we told them, look, you gotta give the players a date in which they, this stuff will come on TQ so they can prepare.
I disagree with Gobbins here. He's saying people have to, because they're working with larger quantities than any small group, right? They have to prepare major changes that create, means a lot of construction needs to happen for ships if a ship falls into favor or out of favor. And so they need more than just a week or so, because the announcement came for some changes recently and then a week later, they were actually put into the game and that just wasn't enough time to adapt the logistic lines. And I think that's what he's asking for here. I don't necessarily agree with that because I feel like that is a big group concern, not necessarily a small group concern.
And their answer was that sometimes with the Q and A process, the, the, sorry, the quality assurance process, they get delayed, so they don't know the exact time. But you know, we argued whether at least they should know like a couple of days in advance. And if they can give people at least 48 hour of warning, then I think that's going to resolve a lot of the frustrations. Yeah, so that's to answer your question about timing and CCP.
He's not wrong. You know, 48 hour notice just prepares people mentally for the next time they log into the game that their, a ship that they might have favored is no longer working as it did before. Maybe there's a psychological component to it. Let's hear more.
Next question, ideas for the CSM to further enhance experience for newer players. Yeah, I mentioned this before, there's a lot of focus based on newer players and I think they definitely are trying to make it so the new players have roles in fleet at every level or.
This is interesting here.
For example, the mining, when it was just very vocal centric, if you have tried to mine recently, the relatively quick trainly tech one barge is actually one of the most optimal solutions and just having a bunch of them. So that's one example of how they try to make the newbies more competitive in terms of ISK making. Another big one is the exploration, they buffed a bunch of the rewards in exploration over and over. And more recently, some of the unique components that you need for capitals and super capitals only drop from exploration, which is something that's normally very newbie oriented. So that's another example. But the answer to your question is definitely CCP is trying to move, move solid power or ability to, to, to have an, an impact away from veterans and more and more make newbies competitive.
Yeah, big time struggle in the game. That's this old.
William asked in terms of economy, CCP is making the rich richer and the poor destitute. So that is correct in the terms that if you try to do scarcity in a brutal way, that's the inevitable outcome. They hope that the stockpiles will deplete over time. Some, some suggestions at the very early stages when they proposed scarcity where that hey, instead of making everything cost more and less resources around, why don't you find ways to make it so people lose the ships? And that the, the stockpiles get depleted because people are using them. And unfortunately, so first of all, they weren't interested and they had a pretty clear idea that they want to do scarcity to begin with. But also I have to say, I can agree with their decision now because that type of stuff where, oh yeah, let's just make, let's just let players, let's just rely on players killing each other, unfortunately never finds itself properly realizing itself in the reality. Because what people do is they still want to keep their, their safety and their. The way I would put this is this, let's say that you make supers really cheap. Yeah, people will use supers more, they will lose more, a bunch of supers. But once they see that their stockpile is really getting depleted, like they can no longer SRP their supers or they can't find a new super when they lose one or their members are unable to keep up, they will stop risking the supers. And that's the problem. Anytime a solution is proposed where, oh, just make ships cheaper and then people will fight more. And it's what you saw at the, I would say at the peak of the, the roar quill era, where yeah, everybody was throwing dread bombs around and because they were so easy to replace an SRP. But was this reducing the stockpiles of dreads? No, actually, it's just that maybe for every red reds built, one would be lost in a dread bomb, but the stockpile itself would keep going up. So unfortunately, I, I now start to believe that you don't really get the change you want without something drastic like scarcity.
Oh, that's a big point. Exclamation mark on that. Gobbins agrees. Scarcity was the way to go. I think it was Dunk Dinkle that really talked about, and actually Vili too, that if you, if you start making it hard to build ships, people won't go out there and fight. And he, and Gobbins is saying that he used to think that too. But in reality, players don't deliver on wiping out their stockpiles. Whether it's easy to build or hard to build almost doesn't matter because as soon as they see their stockpiles not being able to be refilled or grown, they actually stop fighting anyway. So it doesn't matter how cheap it is.
And yeah, to add another thing to this, at least for the way forward, the destitute has more access to these resources than before. Because now, let's say you want to build a dread, you're relying on somebody doing exploration to find that little, the token thing that you need for the dreads. You rely on somebody in low sec harvesting a lot of the percentage of the ore and the cost of the dread. You can no longer just sit under your umbrella in one constellation and have everything come from spod and the other ore that infinitely respawn. You need somebody in ISAC to get to the ISAC ore and you need a bunch of people to go get the gas. And lastly, you need the PI as well. So I think, and all of these things, if you think about, they are not easily or they can't be monopolized by a capital umbrella or the rich. They come mostly from, a lot of these come from just individual activities that people can do without even being related to any corporations. So I think that they moved in the right direction with this. Just sucks that it will take a while to catch up. Okay, next question. Bella Maggie asks, are there any chances of seeing a revamp for the triglavian oars? I haven't heard any talk about triglavian oars and I didn't bring any up myself. I do hope that we get a Poshvan representative in this year. Arcia was the one that reached out to us on the note.
Arcealken from Edencom.
Friendliest. So in the end, we put her somewhere in our ballot. And Mal Davios also had talked to me. I like the guy. I think he has some good ideas. I think he'd be a good candidate too. And I think some of the issues which with Poshvan show that it would be really ideal if, well, it's kind of a longer tangent. When CCP released Poshvan, it's important to mention that was one of the times where because they didn't want anything leaked, they basically didn't tell the CSM anything until it was release time. And there's a lot of very obvious problems with Poshvan's initial iteration that anybody could have pointed out. But so it is what it is.
Let me stop him here. He talks about Poshvan. If you want to know more about Poshvan, the problems they have had, we just did an episode with three of the four clans in Poshvan and they really talk about what's going on there.
Recently, they at least tried to fix it a little bit by reopening Posh. I think one of the clear problems of Poshvan is the rewards, like what to do inside. Everything is mostly worthless, except the, like for, like the, the ore could be good, but the fact that you have to build everything inside Posh and the fact that the citadels aren't really safe now kind of counterpoint to that. The, the only thing is really valuable in Posh are these dread sites. But they, first of all, now it's easy to come and contest them. And second, random people can warp in their ships and steal parts of the rewards. So again, that kind of broke that. So there's many problems in Poshvan that some could be relatively simple to address. And yeah, I hope that either somebody from the Posh camp makes it into CSM or that CCP creates a mini focus group with the Posh boys and implement some of the changes.
That's more likely. I don't think anybody.
William at word fun reference enough in CSM meetings. Okay. I'm not sure what this means. Ask Blar E2s ask dead LP.
I caught the Posh boys too. That's pretty funny.
Posh representative, does the current want to push for good to distribution of dead LP? Yeah, I think it would be excellent. So to go into the need to gritty is asking about the LP that is necessary for the Edencom LP store. And I think, I don't want to be wrong, but some of it also goes from the, on the LP store for like the Memez implants and some of the triglavian related stuff. And the way jobs right now is not very balanced. Yeah, I agree with you. I hope that they look into it. Volp, okay, one second. Uh, yeah, Volp asking, wait, I lost. Oh yeah, going forward, at least the end of the tunnel, people stick to just asking, oh, sorry.
I was just trying to clear out my asses. We'll jump ahead.
Uh, yeah, Derquay is asking, what about the players that don't want to fight? You know, what? That's an excellent question. And of course, there are parts of the game dedicated to those players. That's also why I'm ambivalent about stuff like ganking, because maybe there should be some counterplay at least for the people in ISAC to prevent people just coming and forcing PvP onto them. But that's controversial. I don't have strong feelings either way. But at least regarding your, your question, those money making, those resource gathering options, we call them that way, that exist in the game that are the most separated from PvP, in the sense that the only way somebody can PvP you is they suicide gank you. They have been boosted recently. So CCP is looking into that playstyle too. Without repeating my.
Some of you are asking, how have they been boosted? Well, basically he's saying gankers have been boosted because their ships, which they use as ammunition, right? They suicide them, so they lose them. So it's ammunition or have gotten a lot cheaper. And the targets that they usually hunt, like freighters, jump freighters, all that became more expensive. Therefore their win ratio is much better than it used to be. A lot of times they would not hit a target necessarily because it just wouldn't be worth it. Their ships were, are all too expensive for what's in that freighter. But that equation is totally in their favor now because their stuff is dirt cheap and what they're shooting has become a lot more expensive in addition to the cargo.
Myself, the fact that the ISAC ore is now can only be found in ISAC and is a fundamental component of all ships. The fact that some of these tokens, for example, that you can, I guess you can get them from exploration in many parts, but sort of favor a gameplay style where you can avoid PvP. And generally speaking, I would say the abyssals are the other big thing that they implemented for folks that just want to stay in ISAC and make some money. And you don't need any infrastructure, you don't need any IAB upgrade to run an abyssal. You can run the same abyssal from anywhere in ISAC with zero infrastructure, no corporation, no alliance, that you can run from, you know, the most defended I, uh, null sec system with full infrastructure and the big alliance backing you. So my answer to that would be CCP definitely is looking at those, those players too. And another thing, they, they're trying to constantly help people that want to get into industry. I'm not sure if the recent changes achieved that, and I'm not an industrialist myself, but there's definitely an interest of them to allow more people to getting, getting into industry than just the super producers that have 12 accounts and have the whole chain within their own characters.
Mostly on the harvesting side, but not, not necessarily the production side.
Any word on what tech two industry changes will be? I actually haven't heard much about this. I don't know if I like distracted or something, but I keep hearing about that CCP mentioned something with tech two industry changes at least. And maybe it's a good thing that they, it is that way. They didn't share anything about this with the CSM.
Let's stop there because I'm one of the people who have said T2 is on the way. They've said it's on the way. I now take that back because going back, trying to figure out where that was said. I don't remember if it was Caleb that said it or if we saw Retati say it, I think in an interview with Oz. I need to go back and find that reference because I am no longer sure T2 is changing. The assumption was if they're going to change T1, which they've done and expanded the ingredient base that you need to collect in order to build stuff, that that would ripple through. And it kind of does in that it creates higher supply pressures on items that get used in T2 because those are being used for T1 now. And also that the actual ship that you build as a T1 ship, tech one ship, you need it for the tech two ship. So that went up in price. But I don't know if the expanding of the ingredient base is going to go to tech two, since it's already super expanded. You have to have moon materials to build tech two. So I need to go back and reference that. He's saying that CCP, sorry, that CSM doesn't know anything about it. So he doesn't know where that rumor got going. He's saying maybe he wasn't paying attention. But I'm thinking that Retati said something on an interview and we need to go back and find it and see exactly what he said.
There's some proposed changes to mining, without saying too much, which will affect tech two industry indirectly. I think they're good changes anyways, but yeah, apart from that, I don't really know anything else.
Mining changes coming.
Do you have any plans for wormholes? And how is it affecting the economy? So wormholes really need a wormhole expert to bring feedback. When people bring me wormhole issues, I pass them along. I think a lot of other CSM members do the same. But I don't pretend that I have a good understanding of wormholes. It was great. The first term, I saw that difference really clearly. First term, Exzuki from Wormholes was on.
Great CSM.
And he did a lot of good work with helping CCP understand some of the problems with wormholes, allowing CCP to make many changes, some were controversial, but nevertheless, wormholes got their attention. What happened afterwards is, as I understand it, there was so much infighting between the wormholeers that they refused to put each other on each other's ballot.
This is interesting.
And so they didn't get any candidates. And I mentioned this in the other channel. That's why I kind of take exception to when people say, what are the null blocks doing to help wormholeers get into CSM? I absolutely think wormholes should be represented, but I think step one is the wormholeers need to sort of get, get over their pride. And yes, put your favorite wormholeer at the top of your ballot. But if you're a wormholeer, at least put your enemy wormholeer somewhere in your ballot. So if your guy fails, if you see how the elimination process works, the votes gets transferred. And so at least one wormholeer will be up there. If they refuse to do that, you know, I don't know how seriously I can take them when they're like, oh, where are the null sec guys representing us? Or why aren't you putting us on, on your ballots? And especially when they specifically want you to put not just any wormholeer, but their, their own guy, you know, on their ballot. Okay. Having said that, I really hope that there is a wormhole representative this year. I hope that if there isn't, that CCP will form some kind of focus group to talk to them. And besides that, to the best of my knowledge, one of the biggest problems in wormholes is these roach fleets that they mentioned, where essentially you take a big battleship blob and, well, big like 1015 and clean out the most valuable sites in many holes. And if you do get caught, because the NPCs are only tackling one of the battleships, you can MJD everybody else. You lose one battleship, but that's not a big deal and everybody else gets safe.
Want to go back to that point that he just said, because I think it's really interesting, a little bit of politics behind the scenes there. Wormholeers do approach these null block guys to say, can you put our wormholeer candidate on your ticket somewhere? And he said earlier that Arcia was the only one in the Poshvan group that really approached him and said, can you put me on your ticket? I assume it came from her. Smart play. They did put her on as number six. She's going to get some votes for that. She might even get in because of that. But interestingly, wormholeers do the same thing, except they want their guy, not the other guy. And here's where I again disagree with Gobbins. He's saying like, look, wormholeers want representation. They got to say, I want my guy first, but I'll take this other guy second. And if they were to do that, they would get a candidate in to have a big enough vote. But they would have to do their guy and then the alternative guy, one after the other. The problem is with wormholes is they don't fight over politics. I think they fight over mechanics. And that's different than null sec, for instance. Null sec is just fighting over basic politics and, you know, big boy stuff or whatever. But wormholeers are saying, this is what the nature of wormholes are. We want that or don't want that changed. And this other guy is the exact opposite of what I think. I think it's a lot more about the actual mechanics than the politics. I could be wrong. But that's why it's hard to unify a wormholeer vote.
Yeah, I do hope that they, they look at wormholes and, and address that.
Again, like Poshvan, form a committee, get some information. You don't have to have a CSM rep if you.
Buffs other ship, then nerfing meta ships. I think they have done that, right? They, for example, take, one of my favorite, I think something that they did that's very good is when they look at dictors and they see, okay, everybody's flying sabers. What can we do to make the other dictors also valuable and just an alternative to the saber? Some may be slower, but has more tank or something, some has bit better guns or whatever. And then they did these passes and now it's no longer just the saber as default. So I, I think they've been doing that, like trying to nerf other ships. They try to boost other ships. Another example is with battleships, right? They keep trying to make the battleship class viable. Problem is that it, as they buffed it, it also became more expensive due to the industry changes. Not a big fan of, sorry. I don't think they should have increased the cost of battleships, but anyways, they took our feedback and then they, they proceeded. But that's an example. They definitely did many passes to buff battleships, et cetera. I think it would be cool if they look at tech one cruisers as well. Right now, Karakul is so good, but the others are kind of trash. And there could be a place in between desis and battle cruisers for a low, uh, low effort gang that people can take out.
I'm going to do a quick pause. I want to clear something up. Thank you for looking that up. Who was that? Mastachasm? Here it is, right here inside of the dev blog. Significant update to industry. This is the dev blog that announced these industry changes that were coming. And it is located right here. This new update will expand to all tech two ships, not modules, but ships in the future. So partially true. And that's what we were basing a lot of our information on.
How much of a different power block CSM members actually cooperate? I think there's good cooperation on the CSM, even between blocks. Was surprised even within the war. Some odd topics where it's like it really favors one side or the other have become, I would say, kind of stuck during the war.
Now remember, both Kenneth Feld and Brisk made a big to do about this. Don't make any changes CCP during this war. And a lot of us were saying, hey, we can't stop game progress because of your war. Get over it. And they were saying, yeah, we know, do, do things that you need to do, but don't change anything significant during this war. Because we don't want CCP to pick one side or the other to win the war. And I get what they're saying, but they're also asking a lot. And so this is what Gobbins is saying, the CSM and CCP basically talked about where they were like, you know, should we or shouldn't we make changes that are going to be significant? And I think they actually cut right down the middle. Let's see.
It's just not something that's easy to make progress on, both because it's, there will be strong opinions on both sides for or against. And both because CCP doesn't want to risk seeing, seen as being playing favorites by changing something that's key to the war. But nevertheless, sometimes they did the changes anyways, like with the decloaker thing. I think it's a good example.
Yeah, people thought the war was going to be a lot shorter for sure.
Electronic attack ships be looked at, namely the sentinel. My others are being, are getting lots of love. Bastion model tech two when? I haven't heard anything about either of those. I haven't heard anything about either of those. Sorry about that. Any good rewards coming from fielding? Okay, no, sorry. This is not a question.
I imagine going through like index cards.
Relic exploration sites. I'm not aware of this big imbalance actually. So if you can do me a good write-up with like proper, not just one line where it's like to redistribute relics, but if you can do an explanation, maybe even with some data or lists of why the loot here is better than the loot there and it's very imbalanced.
CSM member at work here.
That's the perfect kind of feedback can be forwarded to CCP, especially the economy team. Did you like that the regions have some differences, like some may be more valuable than others?
Real quick, before you answer that question, that's a really good CSM note that if you want to get a change, if you actually feel strongly about something, the best way to do it is to say, here's an issue, here's why it's an issue. Here are some supporting facts, figures, screenshots, whatever. And if you were to turn it in that way to a CSM member and he could pass it on to CCP or submit it to CCP themselves, you would get a lot better chance of getting some action than to yell about it and complain and to basically perform knowledge in front of other people. Okay, here's a question he just asked. I'll go back just a bit for it.
But if it's extremely, that's what I'm looking for, lopsided, then yeah, they will intervene. Somebody's asking new players and industry, I mentioned this before, they are trying. They even, those blueprints that they were giving out for free when you log in, they were hoping that they would encourage players to try basic industry. They're working on it. I think they're trying different things and seeing what sticks basically. But it's definitely their intention to have new players participate in the industry beyond just harvesting. Does CCP appreciate the need to improve FC's quality of life? So if I have to answer you directly, definitely not as much as I would like them to. And that's something we just keep on trying to highlight to CCP. I'm glad that with CCP Swift now joining the team, I believe he can bring the perspective of why
Former player and FC.
FCs are really important. And I do think that CCP is starting to get it more and more. But at least before we started that work, I didn't feel that they really understood how much FCs mattered, you know, not just for the game and the content, but even their
Here's where he goes into it. I thought he did it earlier, but he goes back into this topic. I think it's very important to him, him being an FC as well. Listen to how he sees fleet commanders. I think it's very telling.
Business model, basically. Like if you think about it, whether customers, a lot of people play almost because of their FC. Either a team of FCs or even their own favorite FC, where they will resub and play when the FC subs and unsub when the FC stops subbing. It's almost like the, you have people subbing to streaming services when their favorite show is on, and then they don't care so much when that show is not on. I think there's a lot of similar dynamics to some of the FCs in Eve. But yeah, I hope that they get a better understanding of this. Question. Yeah, Kismithia asking if basically says new players, key players working in CCP on tutorial. They've been doing that for years. And even when I was there, when we could still fly to Iceland at the summit, they had us test one of the new tutorials with the eye tracking and all, and they're really trying. It's surprisingly very challenging. Both tutorial NP and the, what's it called? Setting up the overview. It sounds like a lot of people think it's trivial to, for CCP to just make a really good overview as default. And it's surprising. Oh, actually, even when they tried, I think at one point they had, they told Jintan, okay, just design an overview and we'll try it. And they tried that and still people weren't happy.
Interesting.
Very complex thing to solve. I think what
Did you catch that? Jintan actually sketched out what the overhaul, what the overview should look like for new players. This is probably three, four years ago. This has always been something they talked about and they do a lot of A B testing at at CCP. They pay a lot of attention to this is how do you, how do you let somebody get acclimated to Eve online? What's the best way to do that? That's a huge focus for them and he explains that a little bit here. But what I didn't know until just this is that one of the CSM members got to sketch out what they thought a good UI would look like and they did test it and it just didn't test as well as anything else. So there is no secret, super experienced Eve player that's going to figure out how best to create a UI that introduces new players to Eve online. That's why they're trying to fail fast and learn from those experiments. And they've been doing that now for a few years.
Might be good is to try a totally radically different thing where instead of the player starting the tutorial in space, they start the tutorial in some kind of like an abyssal pocket in terms of it's just on rails. It's just this one thing. It's more graphically heavy. So because look, if you just look visually how the tutorial looks in Eve, it's, the background is great, but otherwise it's really kind of underwhelming. And it is that way because you have to design it in a way where it spawns in some kind of dead space pocket or anomaly in space, the way it's designed now, right? So there's only so much you can put there to make it look good and compelling. You're also forced to be in a Corvette because otherwise, let's say that you spawn in like, I don't know, a battleship, then anybody would just make new accounts and trade the battleship, right? But if you did it in something like an abyssal pocket where anyways, you can't take anything out. You know what I mean? That was my suggestion to at least for CCP, try and look at that alternative direction.
I just don't think that a player wants to go from battleship back to forget.
One of the things they're investing most of the resources on. And they have, their data already shows that they have had big improvements. You can see that they gloat about it in their own presentations. I don't want to go over it again, but they have made progress in that sense, even if from our perspective as veterans, we may not see it.
Something, I'll pause. This is not a point that advanced players really care about, but there is, we did have CCP on and we talked about what they're trying to do. And they have these funnels where they try to get people deeper and deeper into a funnel, right? So it starts out with a huge amount of people getting involved in Eve, but as time goes on, a lot of them fall out of the game. And what they want to do is get people going a little further and a little further and a little further into the game until you get like months into it and then they're probably going to stick around, statistics show. So how do you get them a little further down that funnel? There's been a lot of science and work done on that. That's what CCP is focusing a ton of effort on. And there's a lot of success there. We should check back in with CCP and see how they've been doing it, you know, about a year later.
Yeah. I don't know if I'll be able to go over all these questions, so I'll try to be faster. If CCP has ideas to bring down the number of everyone in system. So entropy, yeah, that was the idea with Age of Sov, that people will spread more. I don't think that quite worked out. There's always some ideas that are popped up. I remember when Almecca was on the CSM and he proposed, I think it's fair to disclose, I think he said to everybody that like this was an extreme solution where essentially Sov would end up being fought over in like an alliance turning style, five V fives or 10 V 10s.
Hilarious, right?
And I think that goes way too far, but just to give you an idea of the breadth of different solutions that were proposed by various people on the CSM. And one of the hardest things is that whenever you try to design something for the people to spread, like Age of Sov, what ends up happening is that people still tend to blob because it's so N plus one is just so strong and if due to the lack of anything like a line of sight, like a mechanic where you have diminishing returns if you have too many people close to each other. So I think rather than intervening on Sov, there's various ideas that oh, now you could make it so big too close to many other friendly ships gives you a penalty. But anyways, I think it would be better solved in that direction instead. But yeah, CCP is interested in splitting people up rather than mega blob in one place.
Spreading them out into different systems.
Any plans to create more battleship roles? Yeah, as I mentioned, they keep trying to boost battleships and I think everybody on the CSM for two years has always agreed when CCP proposes boost your battleships. At one point even, so this anyways, I don't think will ever happen, but even an idea of giving battleship very short range jump drives was pitched where it would help their mobility a bit to at least get unstuck from situations. I don't think they're going to go that far, but just to give you an idea of how many like now many ways people have tried to suggest boost your battleships. Wolfduke is asking about T3Cs. I absolutely agree that T3Cs need more love. The blobs changes should help T3Cs a bit in the sense it's easier to move them around by spending less fuel. Some of us have been asking for a while now that T3C skill loss be removed. I think this would be a great time to do that. The skill loss from T3Cs made sense when they came out and they were like super OP. But now they, I don't think they're that good in the met anymore to warrant punishing, you know, the pilot with taking away skill points.
You lose skill points if you die in a tech three ship.
They remove that. I spoke to a few people at CCP that are involved in this. Spoke to them directly and they seem to understand and agree that they should probably either completely remove the skill loss or that, you know, dampen it somehow, but we'll see. I don't know how long it will take. I don't know if they'll do it, but I think they're interested.
Well, the other thing is that skill loss wasn't an unknown thing to Eve online. When T3s came out, you could lose skill points, not for being in a T3, but actually just not cloning properly. Even if you didn't get an insured clone, you would lose your last level five skill. You'd lose about half that, about 250,000 XP or SP. And even if you didn't clone enough, you could lose SP. So when you were gaining experience, you would need to pay attention to how many SP points you had, skill points you had, because your clone might not be able to cover all of it. And so losing SP was something you did in the game, which was kind of cool. It was a funnel for SP. But since they removed all that, you still have T3 that is a ship that if you get destroyed and you will lose SP, it just doesn't make as much sense. And so that's what they were talking about there.
Unknown is asking about T3C skill points. Yep, that's what I mentioned. Meopic asking. Will see changes to jump mechanics? No, I don't think they'll remove jump fatigue. I think that they implemented that as amphasic as it sounds as a mechanic, because people were just able to jump everywhere on the map with big sino chains. And you would have cap heavy groups showing up to any fight anywhere in Eve and kind of, I don't know if there's a way to fix that besides the hard stop, which is jump fatigue, like you can't jump so many jumps at once.
All right, got another, what do we have here? 10 minutes?
Miggs asking about making components market viable. I think this is a complex sensor. It has to do a lot without, these things are taxed if you put them up. I agree with you. It's a big problem. In fact, even internally, I was thinking if we should try to have some kind of market that bypasses the tax so people, smaller players can run reactions and stuff like that or components. But yeah, good question. No, I haven't seen a solution by CCP yet.
Could use some good market changes.
That came up a few times, removing bogus contracts from corp and alliance, like being able to, if it's an alliance contract or a corp contract, the directors being able to take it down. That follows the, see, that's exactly why it's important to have our own representatives in the CSM. That's the kind of thing where you have to bring it up. It's kind of a small thing, right? But then it might eventually get addressed and right now.
It's a problem for null.
Last thing we had asked is some changes about the fleet window. So I'm kind of waiting for those to go through before just stacking more requests. But that's definitely something I'll be asking after that.
Yeah, that contracts thing has been a big problem during this war for
Dynomike asking about caps in PVE and whether I'm satisfied how the ESS works. I feel that CCP needs to make up their mind here because they do want bigger ships out there, including in PV at risk. But they also don't seem completely convinced, for example, that a super carrier should be an ISK making ship. I disagree. I think one of the only way in which you can really have a role for supers, like on the long term, is to also give them a PV and kind of a whale role that they can be hunted and there's an advantage in defending them. But this has to be implemented in a way where somehow it doesn't go out of control with the economy, turning them into out of balance money printing machines. Without belaboring the point too much, there's ways to do that, particularly if the sites for the supers were so rare that even if you have, you know, like a giant ton of supers in a smaller space, oops, they can just all start farming, other things like that. I am strongly convinced that you cannot have supers out there in the anomalies, the way they are now, because it's just janky. You have these anomalies designed for subcaps and then you bring a super and it's like enormous APM to blap all the rats really quick. And there's nothing really tackling you. It's just kind of dumb. So for maybe a year now, I kind of asked if it wouldn't make sense to have some super cap specific sites. And the answer has always been yes. So they definitely understand that that's a requirement. The only recently had a person dedicated to just making PV sites in general, mostly for events, but I brought up whether it was possible for him to also work in some kind of super cap site and he said yes. So I don't know what will happen in future, but I think a solution like that would be the optimal one for bringing caps into PVE. So sites that are for caps in PVE. And so if the cap ISK making goes out of control, you can also nerf that by just addressing their sites instead of having to mess with everybody's sites because the same sites are being run by, you know, the guy in his mermaid on and the guy in his snakes. So that would be my answer. As far as ESS, I feel that we haven't really had a chance to try it ourselves. So I don't know. Because it came out during the war and by then there wasn't much to steal from already. I tried ESS personally myself a little bit in Fountain. That's when we were ready in Delve and the guys in Fountain, they were trying to do like home defense, but they were so separated that most of the time they just gave up the SS. I like the fact that CCP has kept iterating on the ISS. So if you notice it came out, then they did one patch where they restricted the hours and they made some other changes. And then it was too restricted and then another patch where they widened the hours, that the payout, how long the money sticks inside the ESS. So I like that. I also reached out personally to several smaller smaller gang players, for example, the streamer guy, Bjorn B had a lot of good feedback about this because he's done a lot of ESS and then passed that to CCP. So overall, I would say I'm satisfied with the ESS. I'm not a big fan of the idea of the reserve key, even though right now it seems like it will be something very good for us when it finally comes out. And apart from that, I think the ESS is just
That's an interesting point.
Initial
Hold on, didn't think about that. It depends. ESS, these keys that are going to be delivered in this quarter, so probably the next month, maybe two, is going to lead to a lot of money that being available out there if you can get into the battle zones and fight and actually win. And it seems to me that the best poised people to do that are the ones that are not necessarily trapped in 1DQ. So it might be a pretty interesting payday. I don't know how big it's going to be. There is a number out there, but I'm not sure what it is. Be several, several billion, but I don't know if it reaches a trillion. It might, might actually, might actually, I don't know, but it's a lot. I don't know if it's the kind of money that changes the fate of a war, but yeah, Pappy's in a better position to capture that money than Goosefour miss. It might make a difference.
Kind of low ganging fruits of ways in which they should implement for smaller groups to be able to extract resources from big space. Like ESS alone isn't going to fix the problem, but a number of things like the SS, whether it's some kind of pipelines where resources move that you can steal from, whether it's some kind of, you can steal fuel or taxes. There's some problem with that, but you know, ideas like that where it's something related to mining and the moon chunks, whether you can steal something related to that. Many ways in which the roaming fleets have more ways to interact with all cell space than just two things. A, killing a ship or B, reinforcing a structure. I think that would be fantastic. So I'm satisfied that the ESS is a step in the right direction there. Kismithia asking about streamer mode. We, Torvald's a big streamer. We had him on the CSM this year. I know he's talked to them about many things related to streaming. I don't know if this was one of them. And I think it's important by the way to have a streamer either on the CSM or community of streamers with close contact with CCP. They also implemented the partner program this year, right? To help streamers. So that's a good thing.
It's mostly designed for streamers, really. It's not designed for organizations.
If CCP is planning to make wormhole gas easier to move. I, I can't answer that. Missed it, addressing inflation. Scale the UI. I don't know much about this. Like changing UI scale. If it's a big problem, like stuff like that, like red dot, like UI related stuff, the best is to give it visibility. Again, make a good post. A good feedback. We can either send it directly to CCP or if it gets a lot of traction on Reddit, Reddit is not the best place, but it's useful for this. If it's a problem that many people care about, that's a good way to give it visibility and we can make sure CCP sees the, the post. A question about Angel Cartel capital ships release. I think that that's really not a priority right now. It's hard to balance the caps that are out there. I, I feel it's one of those things that at this, you know, many people might disagree, but I hate when some kind of almost flair thing is pushed, becomes a meme for CCP and they get distracted from important changes. I don't want them to add angel capitals until the current capitals are fixed, particularly stuff like the Zenitra, stuff like the other faction capitals, which right now have basically no reason whatsoever to be used. So that would be my question regarding the angel capital ships. Otherwise, it's just basically a very expensive skin and you know, it does take effort for the developers to make an entire new ship, both graphically balancing it, making attentive to the ESS. I would advise against this compared
We're skipping this, we're running a bit late.
Kopey is asking whether CCP is planning to considering adding a completely new ship type to
We'll skip that too.
For supers could be kept in check. That was before the huge nerfs, both to super survivability, their attack strength, like think about how many nerfs have happened to super stand, the HP nerfs, the removal of, how to say, so the, the, the application changes. So for Titans, the removal of oz, high angle weapons and the application changes to bosons. Like if you remember, there was a time where you just park a bunch of boson titans on a gate in a sandrum system and just boss on everything that comes in. Easy peasy, right? That's gone. And for the super carriers, apart from the massive nerf to the HP, I think how much stuff
By the way, those that weren't here, when, when Titans first came out, they used to have just one area of damage doomsday device, which was really cool. It was very imaginary, very imagination filling. But then they said, that's too powerful. So we'll make it one concentrated beam that can be a, a cap killer. So you could destroy carriers through dreads with one blast. And then when they redid the Titans, they decided they were going to give an option of four different doomsdays and one of them was a cone shaped blast that was meant to take out a fleet. Well, what Killer B did and some of these other Titan pilots early on is they jumped behind a gate. They would put a scout out, they would, the scout would detect a fleet coming into a gate. And the Titan would blast the cone shaped doomsday and it would just annihilate an entire fleet. They nerfed that pretty quickly.
They nerfed, they nerfed fighter application in general. They nerfed the number of tubes that so that you can no longer have the as many supports. They removed the support fighters when a weapon scramble from the, from the super carriers. They increased the heavy fighter tubes, remove those tubes. They the fighters themselves, the, the, the application was changed, so they're not as good against subcaps. And then for the support fighters, they made them so, especially the siren, they're not as mobile. So they changed the MWD to AB. Anyways, what I'm getting with this is, and then also they made them super expensive with the scarcity patch and the industry revamp. So what I'm getting with this is that the problem with heavy bombers is they were initially pitched solution before all of these changes. And now like, I don't know, the place supers are in. It's kind of tricky to just give some bomber the ability to delete them. So I still hope that they do something like that. If not the heavy bomber, something similar that people have pitched very often is some kind of subcap or something in between a cap and a super that can fit like a single capital turret with a big bonus.
Move ahead for the last minute.
The logian kill mails that required to go in both. All right, great. So I can't answer that.
Sorry, too far back.
Take capital weapon. I don't, you know, random people on Reddit. Every time this is brought up, essentially the issue is the kind of coding and work that required to go in both in the planning, like what counts as logic should be on the skill mail. And as far as code goes, is such that the there's some other priority that those engineers need to work on. And so it, it just never makes it to to something that's implemented. I think I said this before, but I wouldn't be surprised if one day this is something that a few people, a few engineers tried to work on and then they didn't want to disclose it because then people have expectations and they don't know if it will work or break everything. I wouldn't be surprised if one day they just say, hey, we, we got it to work and you now have logian kill mails. And yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I think that's it.
So yeah, if you have last questions, you can throw them out now. There's one about T3 freaks. I haven't seen any plans for that. I doubt there's gonna be T3 freaks, but it wouldn't be a bad idea.
All right, he wraps up here. We're, we're in the last minute.
Would be good to, to add on kill mails. Yeah, otherwise voting is closing in less than three days. So please make sure you vote with build a relation.
That was a while ago. This was again on Sunday or Saturday.
Okay, yeah, then thanks for joining and that's yeah, I think I'll have another meeting like these, just as a war update after the CSM elections. Might be either the week after or two weeks after. And to thank everybody for the votes. And yeah, have a good day, guys.
All right, that's awesome. I was hoping for some war news in there. I didn't detect any. It was all CSM and gameplay stuff, but it was still very interesting. And I think we got some insight on how CSM works, how Nullsec in the form of Gobbins looks at the CSM and how the game is being formed. And then you got some historical insights on stuff that had happened in the past. This is pretty cool. We'll probably get a war update next time and that's what we're looking forward to. We'll bring in the other ones test and Imperium to see what they're thinking at the same time. But this time I wanted to focus on Gobbins. I think he's a great player, great mind. And again, a thought leader for Eve Online. So it's good to kind of get some insight into him talking to his guys, Pandemic Horde. That's all we have time for today. We're going to send you over to Open Comms in the pleasure hub. Have a nice relaxing rest of Friday and have a great weekend. We'll see you on Sunday for Talking in Stations weekend wrap up. And I want to say one last thing. We said that Friday was going to be when they would announce. I don't know where I got that information from. I think it was someone inside of TIS. I'll just throw them under the bus. Because I don't know where I got that. But it is actually, and I got this from the source, Monday. That is when they're going to do it at around 1800. You're going to want to watch that on CCP TV, which is Twitch. CCP Games. You want to watch that channel for the election results for CSM 16. Okay, we will see you Sunday. For now, enjoy Open Comms.